Councilman Musat.
Present.
Councilman Grandy.
Present.
Councilman McCormick.
Present.
Council Vice President D'Agostino.
Present.
And Council President Collins.
Present.
And Councilors.
Councilman McCormick.
Present.
Council Vice President D'Agostino. And Council President Collins.
And Council President Armley.
What's that now? Okay. Page seven, Proclamations, Presentations, or Acknowledgements Review, Discussion, and/or Potential Action and/or Vote. A. Jamison Masochi, volunteer work for the Conservation Commission and Land Trust. About all.
So, uh, really pleased to recognize Jamison Marsachi for his work. He's helped us, uh, oh, sorry.
Really pleased to, uh, recognize Jamison Marsachi for his work with the Land Trust. Um, he came forward looking for a scout project and, um, we were doing all this grant work and we hadn't originally decided to do the entry signs that the town usually takes care of, but, um, with Jamison's help, we were able to do that very economically. He organized the whole thing and we got those, uh, entrance signs that consistent with the other properties on, uh, Lawton Farm because that one was falling down after many years. And West Canock Meadows and, um, Trot Perry Preserve, the, uh, new trailhead down to the Doctor's Lane properties. So we're really pleased to, uh, on behalf of the town because this wouldn't have happened probably under a normal grant work, but the town was able to get this with Jamison's help. So, um, we're presenting this certificate of commendation in recognition of your dedication to volunteerism and professionalism in the Town of Situate. The Situate Town Council and citizens of the Town of Situate wish to express their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Jamison Marsachi for assembling and installing trailhead entrance signs for the Situate Land Trust. And that's, uh, officially presented and signed by Charles Collins, President. And we're happy to present a hundred dollar gift card to Jamison. We hope that'll help you out in college.
Good job. Yeah.
Uh, I get a quick picture here in front of the council.
That's better if somebody else does it.
Eight, public hearings, we have none. Item nine, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, George. Councilman Sisakopkins Road. Um, minutes of council meetings, the minutes of the regular meetings of April 10th and May 8th and the special meeting of May 29th, um, have apparently not been filed with the Secretary of State. The meeting, the minutes of executive session, uh, meetings on May 1st and May 29th have also apparently not been filed with the Secretary of State. And the minutes of the May 29th meetings, both the executive session and the special meeting are not on the town website in clerk base. It's well past time. They have to be filed within 35 days and.
Uh, George, I will take care of that tomorrow, but the executive session is never posted because they're sealed.
A summary is posted saying that the, that the council went into executive session.
That's part of the regular meeting.
Okay.
Minutes, but I will check on the others and I'm sorry for the.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas Gallagher in Pine Hill Road. Um, this is directed at the last council meeting, um, between the planning board and the council. And, um, this is at Mr. Muse's side. I thought you harassed that woman at the meet. It's funny. Well.
I told her I got the message that.
Five minutes ago. I heard you five minutes ago, you said. And she said she had only been to three meetings and she was very nervous. The other thing I have is at that meeting, later in the meeting, you said that, um, as far as that was going about, um, the, uh, classification of the property, that you got 3,250 votes in the election and that there was only five people there complaining about the property. And you're responsible to all the other people. So that I was at that meeting. That tells me I didn't matter because I was one of the five. I made an effort to go there. I thought that was way out of line of you saying that as a professional.
So can I, uh, answer that? Maybe I didn't articulate that properly. I'm responsible to everyone. Okay? There were 3,250 people who voted for me and I am always going to vote for what I think is in the best interest of the Town of Situate. Okay, there were five people who came to that meeting to talk about their displeasure with what the zoning board had recommended. I agreed, I'm sorry, the planning board. I agreed with the planning board. I did not mean to dismiss. I heard your concerns. I did not agree with them. Okay? And I'm sorry if I articulated that the wrong way. I always want to hear from everybody, but at the end of the day, I am going to do what I think is in the best interest of all the citizens of Situate.
Well, the way you handled that woman, I thought it was way out of line.
That's your opinion and you're entitled to it.
Yeah, I watched that thing four times. Meeting. Now, Charlie, I have a question for you. The planning board approved that, uh, land change. Does that mean a marijuana shop can go in there? You wanted to vote for it. What's going in there? Nobody knows what's going in there.
It didn't pass. Nothing is going. It passed with the planning board. It didn't pass with the town council.
Did it pass or didn't it?
It passed with one of the committees, but not the other.
Planning board, that's what I wanted to bring to you, Charlie. You appoint the planning board, am I correct?
Yes.
They passed a motion not knowing what's going to go there. How could they do that? And I went back and looked at the planning board. Go back and look at their meetings. See how many times there's a nay vote. It's, it's, it's terrible. Even with you guys, I never see a nay vote.
All right, Tom, um, I shouldn't jump in here, but you know, I'm not too smart. Um, I think what the planning board voted on, and I don't want to speak for Jeff, but if he's here, I believe that's what he would say is they, they put, they voted on the, um, um, the, the, the change was within the law and within the ordinances and all those stipulations. Um, and that's all they deal with. And then they make a rec, their, their vote, when they complete their vote, they then, if they vote for it, they make a recommendation to the council. Then when it comes here, it become, we decide whether or not it becomes.
I understand.
Yeah, so they, I think they were just, I think they were just voting on the technicality of the application and whether or not it fit within the confines of the laws. That's all.
I was disappointed in the way one of the council has handled it. And I was disappointed in a planning board voting for something that they don't know what's coming there.
No, I, I understand that, but like I said, I think, I don't think that was part of what they were looking at. What they were looking at is does the application fit the parameters set forth? And, and as far as I can tell, and again, I don't want to speak for them, that application fit the parameters. Now, when it comes to us and it's, and they come up and say they're going to put a marijuana shop in or a fireworks factory or whatever it is they're going to do, then it's up to the council to decide that, uh, we don't want that there. Yeah.
Thank you.
As far as the, uh, marijuana and like that, it was voted at the last election. That we can't have it. So that's.
When it was voted.
Right. So that's not going to happen.
Thank you. Yeah, but again, it passed without having any idea what's going in there.
Uh, it's my understanding that when this comes back, because that's the way it was set up, when this comes back, it's going to come back with an explanation as to what's going to be put on that property.
To who?
Back, back to the council.
To the council, yeah. All right, thank you.
Richard, Richard Finnegan Ridge Road. I came here last month. I asked about the orders, recommendations. Mr. President, you said you were going to get back to me. You haven't. Please inform me about the orders, recommendations.
The auditors, uh, had, the auditors had four points. Three of them have been resolved. The second one, uh, excuse me, one of them regarding the disposition of the, the fund balance. A recommendation was made by Karen, uh, in concert with me and we can discuss it at the next, uh, council meeting, which is how to handle that deficit, either to amortize it over a period of time or to write it off against the, uh, general fund. And that deficit is the result of the construction of the, primarily the construction of the police, police station. So we're in good, we're in good stead as far as I'm concerned. Three of the four have been resolved. The fourth one is in your hands. And, and you'll have a recommendation, or you have a recommendation, uh, verbally. I, I think we should amortize it over a period of time consistent with the bonds that were sold to fund the, uh, police department, uh, construction.
I'm glad the treasurer brought up the fund balance. When's it going to be on the agenda?
Next month.
You said you.
There was a secret meeting.
That's what it described as. Correct.
Told you, I knew about it. It was a secret.
So you knew about, did the public know about it? Was it advertised on the Secretary of State's website?
No.
So.
Long meeting.
So is a meeting.
To set up a power.
Uh, for who?
Talk about it anymore. Who filed that request? Mashit sale. You get your information.
For who? Was it for the town?
You anything else said? No.
Was, was it, was it for the town or was it for the, yes, I do. Was it for the town or was it for the schools? Okay, so, so let me inform the public. This secret meeting, thank you, I'll get it in a minute. The secret meeting was at the schools, Clayville School, involved two employees of the school, involved the chairwoman of the school committee and involved Councilman McCormick and the treasurer.
I take exception to the word secret meeting. The treasurer has the right to have a work session in anticipation of a coun, a council presentation that you've asked me to prepare. There was no need to post it. It wasn't a public meeting. There was not a quorum of any elected body. And he's trying to make an insinuation that we're holding a secret meeting. I think anybody can hold a work session to prepare a presentation in anticipation of a future meeting. And his innuendo, I take exception to.
Thank you.
So we will have that next council meeting. Okay.
Is your mic muted?
No, it's on.
It's on? Okay, okay.
The light's on. Now the light's off. Oh, I don't know.
That's the, that's the.
I'm sorry.
All right, we can read that.
All right, you hear me now? The sun was beating on it. I thought it was on. Okay, item 10, consent items. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on them? Bowing, no discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes big. Item 11, appointments, review, discussion, and/or potential action, and/or vote. A. Situate 250th Committee name submitted. One is Michalene Labadi, two is Steve Cornatz.
Move approval.
Second. Bush has been made second. A discussion on it? Bowing, no discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Item 12, resolutions, review, discussion, and/or potential action, and/or vote. Item A is the resolution approving, uh, $424,369 award for Situate middle school entrance relocation contract. To be paid from a $3,500,000 of bonds issued for the school capital projects.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. That's not the one supposed to be.
Super tenet has determined that, that, that the middle school entrance relocation should go out to the formal a bit through the formal bidding process rather than relying on a master.
Okay, so I have a motion to table that then?
Tabled, withdrawn.
Uh, I'm, I'm withdrawing my, uh, motion and I'll move to table.
Second to table.
Yep. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table it. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Stabled. Item B, resolution approving $266,295 award for North Situate Elementary Corridor renovation contract to be paid from $3.5 million of bonds issued for school capital projects.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second. A discussion?
Thomas Gallagher in Pine Hill Road. Are the contractors picked for this work? And if they are, would you name them? Well, you're gonna.
N A R O N.
Maron Construction.
Maron, Maron.
Make their whole three jobs.
The only one is that North Situate elementary school. They recommend anybody's school committee passing the council.
So when the school committee does that, they don't come, then the committee, and it's not made public?
Is it?
Yeah, at their meetings.
At the committee, at the town council?
No, the county school committee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, that money, that money comes from the council. The taxes are raised and the council gives the school committee so much money, so many millions. Now this.
Have this told, told John of bidders on the, on the North Situate Corridor project?
Kyle Robinson, Secocia and Associates Architects. So, uh, North Situate, we went out to bed. We got three bids in and Marin Construction was a little bit, um, off the top of my, my, hold on, I might have all three bids that were submitted. Secocia and Associates?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, the other, yep, the other two bidders on the project were Casablanca Construction and Strategic Solutions. And Marin was a little bidder out of those three.
It's three bids you're talking about now, right? Hey, Nancy.
It, this, yeah.
Council made. So we issue North Situate Corridor project, which is presented to the, the town meeting as a $500,000 one.
Day.
Council is being asked to make the, to be paid from bond funds, three and a half million of bond funds issued for their $266,000, not dollars contract to Maron Construction for the North Situate corridor project. There being three bidders. This was a specific, this was a line item, um, for upgrades of 500,000 in the actual capital budget presented to the FTM in 2024. So it's under budget. This is, is under, completely under budget.
I asked about all of them.
We're doing one at a time.
All right, sorry.
I have to come back every time and ask?
No, we'll, we'll do it. We'll.
Wait a minute. Um, I, I, I try to understand your question. When the, the bond was passed and it was approved by the, the voters at the town financial meeting, the money is then given to the school committee to use for what they presented it for.
My question was, who's the contractor?
Oh, well, you also asked, don't, you started asked about the monies and how they're, right, okay.
Because I never saw it come up in front of the council.
Is it, where does that come, they, that's done at the building of, building?
The priority list starts at the, at the school building committee level, so.
No, but where, where are all the bids discussed in public?
The, all, all the priority list is there and then those are presented with a recommendation from the OPM to the school committee who ultimately takes their recommendation. I mean, we, we, we have this, this third party project manager on our behalf who vets all of this. And then another body after that body vets it is the school committee and we're the third level.
Right, but, 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 hey, Tom, we're, we're talking about this, I think this might, you might be interested in this. What, what is the public setting for all the bids to be considered and decided on?
That would be at the school committee.
So the school that's all.
I mean, all the input on how that process happens though, if you want to know what a priority is.
No, no, I think, I think Tom wants to know who the bidders are, what was bid, bid.
That would be at the school committee level when it's presented.
Who gives the school committee the money?
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
Let me try to explain that. The voters approved three and a half million. We went to the legislature to qualify it for 35% state aid. It ride approved these, these, uh, three and a half million of bond funded projects as well as substantial additional amounts. They allocated them per school. The, the, the allocations per school are
David, I mean.
In excess of that.
Yeah.
The, the state, the Rhode, Rhode Island Department of Education to get your 35% requires you to have a building committee. They require the school committee to approve the project. Our bond act and our, I'm sorry, our FTM approval requires the count as is normal with all of my town clients, requires the council to have final say on any award. So there are several levels. It goes the school committee process as RIDE requires it, but, but the council is not forced to take any action, in my opinion. So they.
And this is school committee get their money? Where do they get their money?
The money on this contract.
No, where did they get their funds?
So the.
Town council.
A little more.
But my, my issue, it might.
But also.
Who gets money?
Well, but there are, but there are state.
Is responsible.
Tom.
If they, if they, just please listen to me. If they did whatever they wanted against the school committee recommendation, you would not get 35%. The state paying 35% of all this. We can, we can issue a bond on our own. Now again, so did it because they didn't want to be bothered and they wouldn't have got state aid anyway for a million dollars for, for something that didn't qualify and they did, the council did whatever they want. You can, if, if the council does not go through this procedure, which is having all the ride approvals, have the school building committee suggest it to the school committee who then adopts it and then comes to the council, you will not get 35%. The voters knew that to get 35%, because I've explained it, that you need to have this process, but the end result is if the council determines that a project should not be done, it's not going to be done.
But David, let me ask you this. The, the question is, at what public meeting are all, in this instance, just answer, I think what Tom's having. In what public meeting are all three bids presented to a public body where that public body makes a decision?
The school committee.
So Tom, if you want to know that information, you go to the school committee meetings or you watch them and, and, because we're going to do what the school committee recommends. I just.
And why is it on your agenda?
Because the bond act says no contract shall be awarded without the approval of the council.
I, I mean, I'm ultimately, isn't your concern that we're spending money on something that's not needed or something? Is that, is that where you're getting it? Because I think if any of these were gold toilets. Like, is it just the process behind it? Because that would be the school committee. Where they'd read your bids and you could analyze it.
We are, but we're going to follow, as long as the school committee has a process where they publicly vet these bids and they make a recommendation, we'll follow the recommendation and apparently it's, you know, we're.
Enforcer of that, because they're not going to be get bond money if they don't.
Right. And so that's, that's the answer, I think.
I didn't know was, who was the contractor that told her? That's all.
Yeah.
You're putting this on paper in front of me. And I'm just asking, who's the contractor that got it? I don't know why it wasn't involved, he included it in there, who the little bidder was.
It's, it's on resolution, it's posted.
It's on the resolution.
On the resolution.
It's right on the resolution.
Resolution the council is considering right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, I don't understand.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Barring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? These all set? C, resolution approving further change orders to North Situate fire alarm contract for financing by the three point, by the $3.5 million bond issued for school capital projects.
So moved. Second.
I actually do have some discussion on this. Um, and we talked about this, David, outside. Who, who has the responsibility for tracking the change orders and kind of tick tock, ticking and tying where it is relative to budget? You know, how much is excess is out there already been used up of the contingency? And kind of going through that.
I suggest the answer is the schools and the architect, the, the architect working with the schools.
Does such a document exist, do you know?
Sorry.
Do you know if such a document exists?
I, I know that there is a, a very large spreadsheet that the architect is working. I've seen.
I, I'm just, I mean, this is such a huge cost overrun or change order. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process and, you know, who else, I mean, the architects, great that the architect's doing that, but it'd be good to have someone in the town of Situate overseeing that as well. And I'm just trying to figure out if anybody does. I know Ted, it's.
Every time it come, when we get a request, which we need to, to approve a change order to a contract, unless we've said on occasion that if it's under 5,000, don't bother us about it.
Right.
That it comes through the treasurer's office. I look at it with Karen and the treasurer. If we have questions, we go back to the schools on it and, and we, and, and, and we inquire the architect where, where it stands in the total project. For, for example, with this particular one, um, North Situate has 792,000 expenses approved by RIDE. The, you, you just were informed that the, the, the corridor renovation is two, is 234,000 under the $500,000 budget and, and, you know, part of that is going to get soaked up with this $41,000 change order.
Yeah.
At North Situate, all of which, I, I don't remember, and the architect can explain what this particular one was about, but it's, it's things that have been mandated by the fire. Would you want to explain the last, this is the $41,000 change order at North Situate?
Let me, let me just respond to one, one quick question.
It's our expectation that the school department maintains that worksheet that you're talking about. So they know what available funds they have to entertain change orders and things of that. Our responsibility, Bond Council and me, is when you guys get it, we're making certain that we're compliant with the bond documents, that we have the money available and that the documentation that we're being provided by the school department, whoever they're assigning that responsibility needs to present it to the school committee so that when they approve submitting this recommendation to you, they're on firm ground.
Yeah, I know that and, and I know that we kind of have to follow, we're being totally have to kind of follow suit with the recommendation from the school committee to get reimbursements, but it'd be nice.
It'd be nice. I, I, I don't like to hear that. You don't have to just follow a recommendation. The, the reason that's coming to you is for you to evaluate that recommendation and that you feel comfortable with it.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying, it'd be nice to see that, that tally, that summary sheet that presumably the school committee has. I think that as these come to us, it'd be nice to see an update.
You want to understand our role is to make sure that we're compliant with the bond documents so that our rating, our tax exempt status, all of those things, our right reimbursement are, are not questioned. And that's why we, we engage David.
Was the list passed by the FTM, there was a list passed by, sent into the FTM. They, they veered from that for mostly good reasons. Um, and you, I went to the school committee yesterday, I have discussions with school superintendent, their legal counsel, whatever. They are moving forward for the, so the building committee can refine and revise.
The microphone, please. Building committee can refine and refine the list of three and a half million dollars of bond projects to present to the council at the September meeting.
Okay, and with, with a status as to how much has been spent on certain projects and cost overruns and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and more so what projects have been switched out.
Okay.
We're certainly going to communicate that, but Jason is our liaison and I would assume that he will drive that message home as well.
Right. Right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Get against the box. Get into the microphone, please. So I do, I do track it on a monthly basis. I present it to the building committee. So there isn't master list. When you get into that master spreadsheet, it has projects that are on the bond and projects that are being funded by the school capital. So it's a, it's an overall capital improvement plan master list, but there is specific separation between bond funds and capital funds. That's presented to the building committee who periodically then presents it to the school committee.
And that's fine. I'm, I'm just saying that at some point, the council would want to know, I'd want to know how, how it's, the projects are going in the aggregate. Are you, in the aggregate, you know, trending on, on, on line, in line with expectations? Are the cost overruns in excess of the budgeted, uh, you know, contingency? That's all I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, in, in this, leading up to this, we've talked about how, you know, with projects moving in and out of the bond based on need and funding available, providing regular updates to the council on which projects are being put into that budget. And in that, we can give, we can provide those updates as the projects are developing. Right now, I would say if anything, you're under what was estimated when the bond was originally.
Okay, and that's what I really want to get to. I personally don't really, I don't really care what projects are going in and out. That's the, to me, that's the responsibility of the school committee, the building committee and all that type of a thing. It's just more the bottom line of where do we stand relative to expectations financially? That's all.
Moving forward, what you're asking is absolutely expected from the school department, from the architects. Before a resolution hits this table, you will have that information or it won't hit this table.
All right.
Okay, so they understand that if they expect something to be passed, that this worksheet has to be updated. So you know exactly the expenditures that have been made against that 3.5 or.
That's what I'm asking.
So I, I want to make it very clear to those participants here that nothing will pass my office to you until I have that updated worksheet.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. You and I spoke once before at a meeting regarding this alarm system. Um, I think, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, I think the first amount of money allocated was $190,000. And then they came back and asked for like $175,000 more because the infrastructure in the school couldn't handle the upgrades that they had proposed. So, and my question to you at the time was, shouldn't someone have checked the infrastructure first before they went ahead and awarded this program, this, this project, only to find out that the infrastructure couldn't handle the upgrades? And at the time, whether you remember it or not, you agreed. So now I have another question. $190,000 or something, another amount of money added on top of that. Are we now asking for more money to finish this project?
So the original, the original price of, it was 190 something.
Right.
Is correct, was the fire alarm. The other, which I believe is 140 something, was for a BDA system. So this is a, an ampli- amplification system.
Right.
For radios. It doesn't, it doesn't actually, it's a different system than the fire alarm system. They're independent of each other.
Right.
The upgrade of the fire alarm system triggered the fire marshal to request the test on whether a BDA system was needed.
Right.
That test was done.
But anybody doesn't understand, the BDA system means that the officer, the fireman outside the building can't talk to the fireman inside the building.
Correct.
Right.
It's, it amplifies their radio signals for both fire and police. In this case, it was focused on fire. So that they can meet, can communicate throughout the building.
Correct.
There was one originally, there was one put into the high school budget, original budget, because they were known areas where the fire department said they cannot communicate
Right.
in that building. North Situate was unknown.
Right.
So it was put in, the 140 was, was, number was received prior to the bid award.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning. Everybody's showing me the, the numbers. I understand that. What I'm asking is that, are we asking, are you folk, somebody asking, not you, for more money for this system above the 190 and the 140?
The $40,000 extra is on the 190.
Okay.
So it was for, so there's a variety of, of things. There were some, the drawings weren't accurate. In some areas, there were some rooms, there was a room underneath a water heater that was found that wasn't on the drawings. There were some areas where the fire marshal requested a different situation, you know, different devices in areas. And I will be honest, there were areas where the, the engineers made a mistake. You know, we calculated, they calculate, the gym for, they calculated something that was, their calculation was a little bit off, the ceiling was a little bit taller, changed the amount of devices that were needed and that wasn't found out until after construction started.
So. And is the contract relieved the engineers a responsibility and culpability for those errors?
So the, the contract, it depends, so it's, it becomes a fuzzy area, depends on whether things were installed and then had to be undone or whether things were missed and would have had to have been included in the first place. So in this 40,000, there were, there were things that were removed and we got credits for. And there were things that were added. There, the, the main part of this was adding a couple, there was a couple outdoor, there was one outdoor storage area that we thought was one, one space. It actually was like three spaces, so we needed a couple extra devices. There were a few doors that were missed that kind of crawl space underneath the water heater. Those are what the, the majority of this is. There were some items like the gym as I spoke of, but there was also some credits in there. Um, there's a storage room off the gym that had two devices. We only needed one in that because it was, wasn't divided the way the drawing said it was divided. So this is just the culmination of adds and subtracts of devices that were determined to be different in the building.
So I, I guess, I guess to boil it down to Mike, to what I'm asking is, if a doctor makes a mistake, his malpractice insurance takes care of that mistake. Your engineers made a mistake. Do they have malpractice insurance that I reimburse the town for $40,000 we had to spend because of their errors?
So only if we, if the errors have been put in and then had to be undone. So.
So the drawings being wrong, the drawings being wrong and not an error previous to the, the contract, the job being started?
So if, as an example, I'll say the closet over there in this room, if we put out a draw, set of drawings and that closet wasn't shown to have a fire alarm device in it. So while that, that is a miss on the drawings, it should have been shown there. The cost to add it in, you never paid for that device. So obviously any time that was spent on our end to, to rectify that system, situation isn't charged. We don't charge to make these changes. And then, but you would still have to pay for that device because that device was not in your original contract. If we told you to put a device in there and it was the wrong device and now you had to pay to take it out and put the correct thing in, that's where our insurances would cover that.
Okay.
That's a overly simplified version of it, but.
Yep, okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, but, but. But you assume that the architectural or the, the engineers assume that the architectural drawings they're looking at are correct. They don't go and verify first because I make architectural designs for computer systems and I know what's in front of me is wrong half the time and I have it verified before I start adding components to that computing infrastructure, the IT infrastructure. So I'm just asking, they blindly going by architectural drawings that could be 20 years old? Architectural drawings that could be twenty years old or and not checking first that they're accurate?
So we're not blindly going by them. We take the old documents, we do walk it.
Okay.
The engineers do walk it. A lot of this stuff is little rooms or. You know, the height of the gym, I don't know the exact dimension, but I think it was within a foot. You know, they had a measurement that was within a foot difference and that foot difference actually changed the calculation for the number of devices. Um, so we don't check everything, we don't measure every room.
A certain level of.
We do a certain level walkthrough and yes, there are things we probably should have, should have noticed the. Crawl space under the water heater, probably we wouldn't have noticed because we're not doing that level of detail. But I'll say I'm sure there was a door or something in there that should have been identified when we walked through. But again, those are. Like the example here, that was a door that was missed, it wasn't shown, so we had to, we had to have it.
So is there a review or what the fuck that marshal recommend? Or do you just go by what the fire marshal says?
So. The fire marshal, we we submit the drawings, the fire marshal provides comments. Or in some cases, when they're out in the field, they provide comments. There are, there, there is a code requirement. And then, so it's based off of code, but there are some areas in the code that allow the fire marshal to make the final decision. So some of these, um, we move some panel boards, some of the equipment. Which didn't work, wasn't installed at the time, but if it's drawn on the, you know, if it's drawn up against this door and we move it over there, that. Requires more conduit, more wiring, things like that. So some of it is. Just as we're out there and the fire marshal says, I'd rather see this panel over here because this is how we're going to approach the building. And if, you know, that we, we don't usually put up an argument with that. If he says we need two heads in a room, we only need one, then we have that discussion and say code only requires one, why are you asking for two? So. It's not blindly following whatever they say, but some of it is up to his discretion.
Any other discussion? Questions? Bob, no other discussion, all in favor? Any against? It's all set. Item D, resolution approving three hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar award. And change order for a fire alarm upgrades at Clayville Elementary School to be paid. From the three point five million dollar bond issued for school capital projects.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made second. We have a discussion or questions on that? All right, Richard.
How did we get to this number?
Okay, what I have here is, uh. Went out to bid in the school committee with a change order, did you hear? Let me explain that.
So, um, the Clayville Fire Alarm Project went out to bid, we got two bids, Commercial Electrical and American Electrical. Um, it was awarded to Commercial Electrical under the. The original goal to get the project moving and completed as quickly as possible under capital funds. Um, there was a change order that was approved yesterday, I believe for twenty thousand dollars. There was an area above. A corridor ceiling that was thought to be open to the attic and would have been covered by attic devices, but. Was found once they started removing enough of the ceiling that it was actually cut off. There was an area cut off from the attic. So they needed additional devices in there. So the the three twenty four nine fifty. Is the bid number and then those added devices. Um, what we're looking for through conversations recently and um, David can give you some more. Detail on this, but looking at cash flow. And as well as the, some of the needs of spending the bond money. It was requested by the school department that this move from capital funds to bond fund, bond funds to help relieve kind of their. Capital cash flow budget.
Dave, you want me to just explain what I got here?
So. Let me explain. The FTM approved three and a half million of projects to specifically three million four hundred and sixty seven thousand projects. And that was among other things, five hundred thousand for a North Citrus water filtration. The, the school committee and the arc, uh, and, and its um, architects and engineers are at the. Point of getting a five hundred thousand dollar grant. So there is five hundred thousand of bond funds that need, needs to be expended. On projects that ride will approve. In addition, two hundred and sixty six thousands of projects approved at the financial town meeting. To be paid by these bonds has been paid from savings in the twenty twenty two bonds. So the total of projects. Before we get to. This Clayville award right now is only. Two hundred and it, two, two point five million, two five, two million five hundred and eighty four thousand. So there's almost a million dollars of projects that that need to be designated for bond funds and spent. Within the IRS guidelines which end in two years in order that the town can keep the interest earnings on the construction fund. Rather than rebating them as arbitrage. So adding the Clayville project, which was on the list. But not as bond funded. It was in in the project list at the FTM capital budget for two hundred and thirty three thousand. We'd like to, I I am, I suggested that that be moved over to bond funds, otherwise the town will not. Be spending on the timetable required by the bond documents and internal revenue regulations to keep the earnings. So we took a project from non-bond and put it into the bond because we, we gained. Over five, oh, seven hu- over seven hundred thousand of bond funded projects paid for other sources. So it really is, is no choice. So um, you, you need to do that, otherwise there are. A various, uh, I don't want to call them penalties, but various losses accruing. That we could keep, other, otherwise we could keep the money. So as I explained, this Clayville was in there for two hundred and thirty three thousand as a non-bond. Project where it's being, it's obviously expanded to three hundred and. Three hundred and twenty four thousand with recent change order and I'm, I'm suggesting. The, the school committee went along with that and passed that last night. I went there. We, I, I'm suggesting. From, from a bond perspective, you want to switch that over to pay that of bond funds. Your bond act authorized. Paying from the bonds, any school capital project as reflected in the capital bu- budget from time to time. I fully anticipated that, that things come under budget and over budget and some projects perhaps cannot be done. So we'd like to keep that flexible. The, as I said, I. I have consistently with all my town clients reserved the right to the council to make the final decision in all the documentation. So. That's what I'm proposing with the council. I propose that to the schools. They had the school committee approve it. I'm proposing it. That's, that's. Why this project is moving from one column to another.
Thank you, Dave.
I think this, this is an important point to bring up Tim's comments about us monitoring it. Without David's involvement in this approval that you guys have submitted to, we had, what was it? Eight, nine hundred thousand dollars that would have been in jeopardy at the end of the year if we didn't reallocate things to bond expenditures. So by his involvement, we're saving that money to use on our projects. If we hadn't done this adjustment of where we. The source of funding, if you would, uh, we would have jeopardized, you know, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars of money that we would have ended up paying back to the IRS. So we are paying attention, we're, we're, we're allocating money where, where Jason knows that as well with his experience.
It's ninety, it's about ninety thousand what we're jeopardizing the school housing.
Does this D correlate to number twenty, resolution number twenty five ten?
This, this is the one they just had, this is the prior one for the forty one thousand. Of the North City change order. This is what we're talking about now, D.
This is number twenty five eleven, right, Dave?
At C, yeah. Where, where's the resolution? Is that the resolution here? No, the Clayville resolution is twenty five dash eleven. Any other questions, discussion? Bob, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it's the passes. Moving to thirteen, town business review discussion and or potential action and or vote.
I just, I, except, I'm really confused. Twenty five eleven says Clayville Elementary School. Twenty five ten. Says the fire alarm.
Yes, C, C on the agenda, fire alarm, North City Fire Alarm.
But there's no dollar amount there, but you're saying, so, so North City Fire Alarm is that one, not. I got the resolution approving three hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars award change order for fire alarm upgrade. That's at Clayville, so. That's the difference. That's Clayville once.
It was an original bid for three hundred, it was an original bid for three hundred thousand. The school committee last night asked for another twenty four thousand on a change order, so the, the Clayville already has a change, just before we even. Passed it, has a change order.
So I was at the school committee the last time, I didn't go last time. All right, thank you, thanks.
Okay, item A, should I have a motion to table that, uh, councilwoman, you are asked for this and she's not here tonight?
So moved.
Motion remains second at the table, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against, stabled? Item B, consideration of requests from Michael DeFazio, owner of DeFazio Farm and Winery. To amend ordinance six dash four liquor license limited. Uh, increasing the number of BV beverage circulating licenses allowed in town. Currently, the ordinance. Limits the town to three BV licenses.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Anthony DBA, presenting Mr. DeFazio. But, um, the information I had was who came here tonight for an informational discussion as to the possibility of Mr. DeFazio. Um, being allowed to, uh, apply for an additional license. Speaking into the mic.
You gotta speak into the mic.
So.
There you go.
Our understanding was that this was going to be an informational discussion. As to the possibility of the town issuing an additional license. Uh, for my client to be able to apply for. He owns the vineyard down the road here. Um, and he's been operating for the last two years. Uh, he does have an event license and has been having events there. However. Uh, he'd like to take it to the next level and have larger events such as weddings and similar type events. Um, he would not be able to do that under the current liquor license he has, which is. Just the wine license for the, um, for the vineyard. So he was, um, told to send a letter, he sent a letter. Um, and I guess he was put on the docket tonight to have this discussion. Now, uh, my understanding is there's three licenses issued in town, um, so he would be looking for an additional license to be. Uh, issued so that he could have an opportunity to apply for that license so he can expand his business. At this point, he's running the vineyard, he's running the farm, but his businesses are struggling. Um, with the, the smaller events that he's having, he's just, you know, it, it, it's not. He's not making it there. So again, he's looking to expand his business a little bit in order to have. Um, uh, larger events there such as weddings. Uh, he's getting a lot of inquiries about weddings with the vineyard, uh, that's. Popular thing now, so he's looking to try to expand the business to do events like that, maybe do fundraisers, weddings. Um, similar events like birthday parties, showers, uh, graduation parties, anniversaries and stuff like that. He hasn't done any, he, he did, um, he does, like I said, he does have that license for the wine. That he's doing there now, but without a, a liquor license in itself, he's not going to be able to have these larger events. It's not going to attract. People and that's what he's experiencing right now. He, he can't bring in, um, you know, larger crowds on just that, that wine license.
Um, Mr. DBA's, uh. Would you? Good story, no, like, um, would, would you, uh, would you expect Mr. DeFazio to. Have to get some kind of zoning relief to do what it is that he's seeking to do here?
That's correct. He would need that. He does the impression that he wanted to. At least put the feelers out there to see if there's a possibility of him getting licensed. He's struggling as, as it is now financially. He didn't want to start the ball in motion per se.
Sure.
To get these things done, start doing some, he, he did put the, um, the septic in and whatnot, but he. He would need a zone change, he would need to do some additional, you have to get permits and do some additional structuring there to allow for the bigger events. But he didn't want to put that money out there now if there's no shot of him getting the license. So if he doesn't get the license, it's not. Worth him putting the money into the farm to do that.
Sure. So, and I'm just speaking, uh, just for myself here this evening, um, I'm not opposed to expanding. Um, liquor license availability in town. We, we actually recently, um. Uh, either did that or attempted to do that for a class A license in town. Um, but I think that. Um. What I. My concern is if, and this isn't obviously up for a vote tonight, but, um. If we added a, if, if the council added another BV license to our list of licenses. I think that. It would behoove Mr. DeFazio to have everything ready to go. At the time that the council were to add that, if, if the council was going to add it. And I know your question this evening is, or what you're asking, your. Client is asking is whether we're amenable to it. Um, and so I don't, I don't think there's really a, an action item for us to vote on. I would certainly consider expanding the number of liquor licenses, but I can't. And I don't think this council, again, I'm speaking for myself, but I don't this, I don't think this council can say, well, we're going to add a liquor license, I want to give it to Mr. DeFazio. Cause it doesn't work like that, but, but, but you know, i- i- it's a, I, I understand what you're asking and I think you've got a. Classic chicken and egg situation, but I understand you've got to put the feelers out and, um. And I, speaking just for myself, I would not be opposed to considering adding another BV license.
And I understand that you can't commit a hundred percent to that because you don't know what the sentiment of the town's going to be when it comes before you. But I think his, his, like I said, his, uh, purpose tonight, not to be on the agenda for a vote, and I agree, and. We're not prepared for that, um, tonight either, to present enough evidence here for you to make that decision. However, like I said, he, he, he's just trying to get a feel as to whether or not it's going to be worth. Him to spend the money to get to that point. And I understand if you do decide to put a license out there, it's not going to be for him. You may have ten different people apply for that license. Now you have to decide who's going to get that. We understand all of that, but he's trying to. Trying to make a good business decision as to whether or not it's worth investing the money into the, into the property.
Somebody help me out. Didn't we have to apply to the general assembly for that, that additional license?
Yes, yeah.
That's only say.
Okay, okay.
From what I understand. The liquor stores are run by population to the state. And has nothing to do with these licenses that I'm looking to. Get.
I mean, I, I will say for myself that, you know. You know, it'd be good to help a business, a local business, and, and I think this council in general feels that way. Um, however, I don't know as though there's a great deal of interest in having potentially, okay, a bar of. And chat, and chat, Mr. Hill, and I just wonder how you can get that in between, because that's not what you're proposing, but if we give you that license. Unless, correct, someone else can correct me, you could have a bar. Uh, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to. But it's, you want to have it for a. But you want to have it for special, for big events. But you want to have it for special, for big events.
Why would I want any? To have weddings. Both the difference being by adding a restaurant there and have weddings there as well. But yeah, I would be my client to have a a full liquor license.
Have an idea of the operating hours, things of that sort, you know?
We'll leave it at eleven o'clock on weekends. I forgot what it was actually, ten o'clock during the week. I don't know if it's, if it's going to be the same as the red. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have any, anything set.
And how many, how?
Alright, alright, we're, we're not having a public hearing right now, so we're not going to ask a lot of questions. You know, we're not going to take questions from the public like that. That would be for the zoning and or planning board. You know, I don't want to get into a full discussion here. I hope we answered your question, you know, what your question was when you came out with the feeling of our council.
Okay, yes, we got a, a feel that, you know, it's not out of the question, so that's a good thing. But I know we have some hurdles to, to overcome to get to that point.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Your time tonight.
My turn? Is it my turn?
Uh, I think she wants to say something.
Hello, I just have a couple of questions. I'm Jackie Brusso with AD Crew Drive. Um, I wanted to know what you, what the criteria you guys use to decide if the town needs or would want another BV license?
I think that it would, it would have to go through the planning board and it would have to go through zoning. Uh, they would have hearings on it, you know, you and your neighbors or whatever could go there. Your budding neighbors could go there like that, discuss it and like that. Then they would recommend to us, we would be looking at their recommendations or I would personally.
Well, that's once they, once the license is allowed, but I guess.
No, the license wouldn't be allowed till.
Well, so you have to amend.
That's put the, you know, the horse before the car.
Another license, right? So before he can apply for that license, the ordinance has to get amended.
Right.
So what is your criteria for deciding whether or not you should amend that, uh, ordinance? Like, like you, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Musa, Musa?
Oh, uh, Dagostino, David Dagostino.
I'm sorry.
It's the hair, it's the hairdo.
We have the same vibe, we have the same vibe.
Um, so like you mentioned, you know, I'm not opposed to it, right? So that's just your personal, but like when we get to the point, say next month, it's on the agenda to actually amend the license. I'm just looking to find out what, what is the criteria you guys look for? Is it like, okay, the town's growing? Is there a lot more people? Or is there a demand or is it location? Like, I'm just looking for what, what it is you're going to look at for that consideration.
I can't, I can't speak for the other members, but what I would look at is the, what the neighbors in that area have to say. What their concerns would be. And in general, we want to vote in this, in the town of Situate. We want to have economic development so we can bring in some business related tax relief or revenue because it's like all small towns. We need more commercial revenue to, to help us fund what's needed, you know, what the citizens want, what's best for the town. So it's, it's, it's bound, it's a balancing act really, you know?
Second liquor license related item in the last like six months where the person comes saying, well, my business is failing. I need a liquor license in order to get better. So it just seems really, I don't know. I just, I, I don't feel like the town needs another liquor license. We just increased them six or seven years ago. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I'm going to find it. Um, the other, um, one I wanted to bring up just for your consideration is, I assume there's a reason why we have a on the amount of liquor licenses. So I would ask you to consider why we have a limit. I would need to increase that limit, you know, when you're thinking about whether or not this makes sense for the whole town. Um, and also keeping in mind where this potential location might be. I know we're not discussing that particular item this time. But looking at the fact that there's three other liquor related outlets within a half a mile of that particular, uh, requestee's spot. Um, I feel like that's a lot and I know, I know there's like four general like areas in the whole town that have commercials. So it's all going to end up being in those four areas, but it just seems highly concentrated all of a sudden. So that, I'm just expressing my opinion. Um, and then the last thing, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. Oh, I think I put two things together. I think that's it. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Gary.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, against, adjourned.